2015 regular meeting of the Troy Planning Commission. Excuse me. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the Planning Commission. The roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle Workman Associates. If you wish to address the planning commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your names for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the planning commission and not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, BlackBerries, PDAs, or any other devices that might disrupt this meeting please either be placed in silent mode or be turned off. Ms. Shaw, can you give the roll call, please?
Mr. Appiahian?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Grant?
Here.
Ms. Koopa?
Here.
Ms. Zanzika?
Here.
Ms. Stratt?
Here.
Ms. Chagle?
Here.
For a presence, the next item is the approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve? Thank you, Mr. Chagle. Support by Mr. Strat?
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Ms. Koopa?
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Strat?
Yes.
Ms. Chagle?
Yes.
Third item is the minutes of the March 24th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. Is there a motion to approve or to amend? Ms. Koopa, thank you. Second by Mr. Appiahian.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Ms. Koopa?
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Strat?
Yes.
Ms. Chagle?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Item number four is public comment for items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak to an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing no one, we'll move on to item number five. Site condominium development review. Preliminary site plan review. Proposed Pineary Woods Site Condominium, 25 units, north side of Waddles between Greensboro and Forsite. Section 13, current zone R1C, one-family residential district. Who's going to take this?
Mr. Carlisle will summarize the revised plan. Basically, you will recall the planning commission considered this item initially on March 10th, 2015 at the regular meeting, and the planning commission postponed the item after much discussion to provide the applicant an opportunity to explore design options related to stormwater retention and cluster options. And the applicant has submitted a revised plan, and Mr. Carlisle did prepare a report based on that revised plan.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Thank you to the planning commission, Brett Knight, of the clicker. So as Brett alluded, the applicant, sorry, since the March 10th meeting, the applicant did go back and look at options in regards to clustering and use of best management in terms of stormwater management as well as tree preservation. The applicant representative, engineered representative, did talk to us at the office and even better explained what they consider and what options were on the table and options were not possible. What they came back is very similar to what we initially first reviewed. There were three changes to the site plan from the prior review and this review. The first and most significant change is they relocated detention pond to this corner of the site. Originally, it was in this location adjacent to this property. In doing so, they also added a landscape strip that will be under the common ownership of the homeowners association. And the third item that they've done, changing the plan, is they preserve approximately six more trees on the site than what they originally had shown. And these six are located along the very edge of periphery of the development. Everything essentially from this location on is the same layout for the most part than what you have had originally seen. I will note, though, that they did lose one lot as a result of the location of the detention pond from what the planning commission originally saw. So again, those are the three changes. The relocation of the detention pond, the addition of this strip of landscape area, and the preservation of six additional trees than what was originally presented. Thank you.
Questions for the consultant? Yes?
It's not a question, but I did ask the applicant's engineer, Nathan Robinson, if he could just do a very brief summary of some of the thinking and some of the ideas that went behind what we're looking at now.
Yeah, we're here as the applicant anyway, so. Is the applicant present?
Yeah, still up here, so.
Good evening, Nathan Robinson, Horizon Engineering. So I'll run through some of the issues that were discussed at the last planning commission meeting and how it impacted, if at all, the current site plan. Couple items that were discussed prior were open space and cluster development options. And those were thought about long enough to know that it doesn't apply, or we can't reasonably apply those in this situation. First of all, the open space preservation option is not allowed in the R1C, so we can't apply under that option regardless. The clustering option, for the size of the property and for being zoned R1C, if you go to the preliminary grading utility plan, you'll see the house footprints and how tight they are on these lots. So these aren't very large lots, they're smaller. In the single-family district, these are one of the smaller units. So when you talk clustering, the whole, correct me if I'm wrong, but the intent of the ordinance is to confine the development to a smaller area so that you can provide open space. To confine the development, you're going to basically reduce your building envelopes, reduce your building setbacks, reduce the home footprints. And I can't speak for Mr. Maniaci on his marketing and whatnot, but the products that he's marketing with these homes, they sell. And I know that because we do the plot plans after the subdivision's built, and he sells the homes. He's got a target audience, his products sell well, and for the developer to reduce the home sizes, it's going to have a negative effect on his marketing strategies. Now, to offset that, the ordinance allows, for giving up open space, the ordinance does allow for a density bonus that was also brought up at the previous meeting. The problem with that is that there are two components to that. Number one, in order to receive a density bonus, we have to have 150-foot perimeter around the property as open space, which would significantly affect the development plan. In addition to that, we'd have to provide 50% open space. So, which, again, with the size of this property, that would severely reduce our density, and we wouldn't even be here tonight because this development wouldn't be possible. So for those reasons, we don't feel that providing an open space plan or a cluster development option is really feasible. Couple of items that were brought up were biolivestals and rain gardens, stormwater management techniques, and there was some discussion on the detention basin. So as I mentioned, that this, the detention for the site, the city requires a 25-year detention if we connect to a city storm drainage system. We did some further work on it, and we come to realize that we are going to have to actually tap into a county drainage system, which requires 100-year detention. So by default, we had to make the pond larger because of the different detention requirements. In looking at the design of the subdivision, the location of the detention pond, the location of our drainage outlet, we moved the detention basin to the other side of the street, a curve in the street, to allow for the space. We lost a unit, basically to try and fit in our detention basin. But in addition to that, we're also trying to provide some additional landscaping around the detention basin. So in order to do that, we tried to create some relatively flat areas so that we're not putting these plantings in the side slopes. We're trying to create some flat space for the additional vegetation. By increasing the pond, by shifting the road, it created an open space strip adjacent to the residence to the east. And basically, the reason why that open space strip is there is we can't reasonably move the street to be directly online with our property line, because even though that residence is not necessarily, not part of the condominium, we cannot create that as a corner lot because of the setback relationship that that home would have to the street, essentially. So we need to have a space there regardless if that was to be considered a front yard setback, for example. And one of the other items that was discussed was tree preservation. Obviously, the first plan, the original plan that was submitted, most of the trees were going to be removed to accommodate the development. Not much has changed, there's a few more trees that are to be saved. Basically, I walked the site myself after the end of the planning commission meeting to try and identify with my own eyes where are some areas of potential tree preservation, what are the condition of the trees. Granted, we have a tree preservation plan, a tree inventory that shows the location of the trees, most of which were obvious based on the locations of the streets and utilities and homesites that they would have to come down. But I also wanted to see, mainly on the perimeter of the site, are there any trees that are, number one, worth saving, number two, that can be reasonably saved due to the improvements? So in my opinion, the greatest potential for tree preservation was along the north property line. I saw that in general, those trees, their form, their condition, their species, were more of a, on the desirable end of them, whereas unfortunately, along the eastern property line, and I'm going to assume some of these residents are, live to the east and have these trees essentially in their rear yard or close there, too. Unfortunately, those trees suffered numerous problems. I saw trees that had pest holes, I saw trees that had a severe lean to them, trees that were otherwise storm damaged, some of the tree species weren't the most attractive tree species, they were more of a nuisance type of a tree. You know, there were other trees that, while they could be preserved because of the storm drainage system that's required in the rear yards, that the likelihood of the survival of these trees is very questionable without basically moving the storm sewer into the lot to try to save these trees. But the detriment there is that these homeowners wouldn't be able to do what a normal homeowner would like to do with their yard, put in a deck, put in a pool, put in a patio. You can't put these items on top of a storm sewer, storm sewer easement, so what's the trade-off? Do these people lose these benefits to save what are essentially, I hate to say this, but junk trees? I mean, they are, I saw these trees, I've got pictures, and that's, those were the areas that I was trying to focus on. Unfortunately, the west property line is completely open, there is not a single tree on the west property line. Likewise, along the street frontage, there was only one tree that could potentially be saved that actually falls within the city walk, the proposed city walk on the right-of-way line, but it's a box cellar that's basically a junk tree. I think that was, unless I'm missing anything, that was for the most part of the issues that we discussed. As I mentioned, additional landscaping around the detention pond that was also mentioned, and we did provide additional plantings. As well as the open space strip that's adjacent to the residence to the east, obviously, the landscape plan shows there's additional plantings there as well.
Any questions for the applicant from the planning commission? Okay, here you have them. Since this is not a public hearing, the planning commission does have a policy of hearing residents, nearby residents who want to comment on that. So we'll now ask anyone, be sure you have all signed in and your address on the sign-in sheet. And we do ask that you don't repeat comments that were made by the previous other commenters. So we'll begin with whoever wants to begin here. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You'll have to go to the microphone and state your name.
I'm signed in.
And you're not signed in, sir?
I am signed in.
Thank you.
My name is John Taylor, I live at 40165 Forsite, and I will be the northern neighbor of the development. My lot's approximately 890 feet deep. The new neighbors will take about 600 feet of it. So I'll have four new neighbors there. As you can see, there's two new dead-end streets coming into my property, and there's a dead-end street at the back of my property. So I'll have three dead-end streets going into a residential lot. So when I first saw this, I thought, who'd want that? Not me. That's not why I'm here. It certainly changes the character and ambiance of what I have. And so that is a concern. There's other concerns that I have. You know, there's a, all the trees are coming down, 97% of them. So they're all coming down. A lot of that is wooded, and it's a lot of it that's on the northern and eastern side of the development. But hell, I've enjoyed those woods for a long time, for over 30 years. And this development's coming in, and I understand, you know, and I'm not here to stop this development. But boy, there's been no respect to the green spaces when it comes to this plan. The trees go. There's no pine trees in this area now. Now the name, but the development's going to be, you know, the Pineery or something like that.
Please explain this, ladies and gentlemen.
And so I do have a concern about green spaces, I have concerns about two dead-end streets coming into my property. I don't want them. I understand that it may happen anywhere. What kind of privacy do I have over there? I'm also concerned about water runoff. That is a very low land area, if you wanted to walk there, now you'd better have your boots on. And so I understand, you know, there's going to be sewers in there, that's been explained to me by Mr. Savinat and Mr. Carlisle, you know, that those things will be taken care of. However, I have a very low piece of property. I don't want to be flooded up, not any more water than I have right now. And so I've got concerns regarding the character of what, you know, certainly my lifestyle's going to change. And privacy, water runoff, and so I would like those things to be considered by a few of my neighbors. So I think you know how I feel. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mia Schaefer, and my address is 4084 Greensboro. My house is smack in the middle, right there, and I will definitely be impacted. I have questions, if I may. I would like to know the date that our beautiful woods would be torn down. Do we have a date?
Ma'am, we don't answer questions, you just go ahead and...
Okay, then I would like to request that for the ambiance that we're losing, that instead of a brick wall or anything unsightly like that, we would prefer to have pine trees planted as a border. And I don't know what the plans are for that right now, but I think it would be a hideous shame to have to look at a brick wall in my backyard. So hopefully, that will not be the case. Pine trees would be strongly preferred. I am also concerned about flood protection. It is very low, very wet, very wet at all times of year, even when it's August. I know that there will be runoff from water. I'm concerned about my basement, I'm concerned about my neighbors' basements. I would like to make sure that that is taken care of, 100%. And those are my concerns, and it's a shame.
Thank you, Ms. Schaefer. That doesn't help the case at all. But if we don't need applause, please. Who's likely wants to be next?
My name is Diane Trombley, I live at 4270 Greensboro. I will not be as intimately affected as some of my neighbors will be, but I'd just like to suggest to the planning commission that through your decisions, you are altering the very thing that makes Troy a lovely place to live. By removing the trees, by building everywhere possible to build, every blade of grass no longer has a partner. You are removing from those who live in Troy that which makes Troy livable.
Max Akins, 2545 East Waddles. Concerns for the planning with the landscape next door. Not to repeat, but drainage issue on that parcel. I know the drain's going to the back, but on the plan, there's no drain except for what's on the street side, and I don't see on the plan any drains on the east side of that street for water runoff. My property is low, standing water there. I know that new drainage on the back is going to take care of some of it, but my concern is to the, right to the west of the property there where the shrubs and stuff are going in. And my next concern would be overhead power lines dead-end at the telephone pole on the property. How do I ensure that Edison doesn't stick a transformer up there? Because it's going to be a power line dead-end. Currently, there's no transformer at the end of that line, but how am I ensured that Edison won't stick one up there? Those are my concerns.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Harold Clark, I live at 2571 East Waddles, and I have a concern also. My property is the one that sticks out a little further than everybody else is there, and it says something about right-of-way across the back of my property. Could somebody explain that to me?
Well, we'll answer your question after you.
Okay. That, the water issue, everybody has the same problem with water. That's probably our biggest issue with this subdivision. And are you, everybody okay with the fact that my property sticks out 30 feet more than the other ones? No? I couldn't figure that out when the lady tried to buy our property, she said all of us were getting the same amount, same money, same amount of property and everything. And evidently not. So I'm just, is the city okay with me having 30 feet more and a fence coming into their property? So those are my concerns.
Can we show his... Flat 40 right here.
To address the right-of-way, there's no right-of-way behind that, behind your parcel.
Okay, what's it, what are those RN right-of-way? Isn't that part of the...
It's an easement for utilities and stormwater. It's not a right-of-way.
But I still can't build anything there, right? If it's an easement.
It's not, it would not be your property, you submit to the developer.
No, I'm talking about, see how my property sticks out 30 feet further than the other ones?
Uh-huh.
Okay, there's no easement on my property, that's all on theirs? Okay.
Anyone else?
I have one more question.
Let's wait and see if there's someone else first, okay?
My name is Katie Caffania, and I live at 4096 Greensboro, who lives next door to Mia Schaefer. And I am a mother of four children who all attend Troy schools. And we moved into this district in 2004 before my twins were born. And one of the reasons, or there's so many reasons why people move to Troy, school district, fantastic neighborhoods, fantastic people who live here, and fantastic leadership of the community, so many reasons. And we bought our house, probably paid more than we should've, could've afforded to, and we've struggled. And we've continued to make our house payment as the values of our houses fell and as people foreclosed in our neighborhood. We continue to make our payments. We could not refinance our home, we were completely underwater, to the point of where we owed $40,000 more than our home was worth. I'm happy to say that we weathered that storm, and in the last year, we were able to refinance because the home values went up. The home values in our Mount Vernon Estates have returned to close to where they were when we bought it. What you're planning to do, however, will return our home values to their lowest levels. One of the very nicest things about living in Greensboro is our wooded area behind our house. You take that down, you lower our home values. And we're all back to where we started, owing more than what our homes were worth. That's one issue. And that's, you know, you can do with that what you may. The second issue is I feel like, anyone who's familiar with Dr. Seuss, that this is like the Lorax, and we're just cutting down every tree, every green space, every possible beauty, every possible beautiful thing in the city to fill it with homes and condominiums and things that destroy the environment, move out Mother's Nature. We sit in our home and watch deer, families of deer. We look at them like they're our family. Every year, there are more babies born. We see bucks, we see does, we see families, coyotes, families of coyotes, not that they're our favorite part of living there, but they're there. Where are they going to go? It's devastating to Mother Nature. I don't think that Troy wants to lead some bandwagon of destroying all green spaces. I don't think that this fantastic city wants that to be something that they can advertise, that we filled every space with homes or condos. That's not why people move to Troy. And I ask that you seriously think about that when you tear down every tree and you misplace every animal and you destroy the home values in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, sir.
Safety concern, two dead-end streets going in the back. How does the city propose to, in case of emergency, have fire trucks turning around in and out of a dead-end street?
They'll be required to be designed so that emergency vehicles can turn around safely, conveniently, quickly. They'll be required to be designed so that they can have...
Okay, see, no one else. We'll return the item back to the planning commission for a resolution or a discussion. Well, since there's no one else to speak, I'll just go ahead and say what I think. I think that the developer has shown some movement. And everyone needs to understand he's, he's meeting the requirements of the ordinance as it now is. And we've talked about this before. Talked about it with the trees. We've talked about it with the cluster option. And we, I think at our last meeting, we actually passed a resolution to have the staff explore those areas for an ordinance change. I'll, I'll stop right there. Was there any other questions that the members of the residents had that we have responses from the staff?
Engineering concerns, this is a preliminary site plan application. And if, if they get approval this evening or if they get approval, that will basically give them a go ahead to start their engineering design. And the engineering for Roger Holmes spoke this evening. And it's his job to design this in such a way that does not negatively impact the building properties. So it's not going to be able to, it cannot exacerbate the flood situation on the property of the north, nor can it drain the property of the north. It's got to be designed so that it doesn't, doesn't impact it. And the same goes for all the properties in the area. So that, again, this is preliminary site plan. It's more layout and gen, very, very preliminary and general utility and grading information. Anything else you want to add?
Mr. Edmonds, I do have some comments, I think. Maybe for the education of everyone in here. City of Troy is governed by the ordinance. The state has a statute, but we have ordinances, zoning ordinances, which require certain instances as to size of lots, building, layout, engineering. And the law says that if a developer meets all those requirements of the ordinance, we have no choice but to approve this development. We have asked years for a tree ordinance. We have not moved it. It's disheartening. I know everyone comes out. I came out in nineteen seventy-five. I had a hundred and seventy-five acres of back of us. The Chrysler Road, completely developed now. We still have deer walk through and eat our bushes. But unfortunately, I feel your pain, but legally, there is nothing that we can do to keep an open space, keep the trees. Developers pay a lot of money for the site. It's his property. And we can't tell him anymore what to do with that than the law requires anymore than, you can have somebody come in, your neighbors, and decide that they wanted to cut down a couple of their trees because it obstructs their view of the sunset. Yeah, it cuts both ways. And unfortunately, City of Troy has grown and is a process. We've lost woodlands.
Could I just make one quick comment?
Uh, no, ma'am. It's not a give and take. Excuse me. Yes, Mr. Tagle.
Do you guys have any concerns about any light spillage onto the property to the north with the dead end roads facing that way? I, I can't tell you, based on what I have here in front of me, what's actually directly opposite the ends of those two roads, if it's just heavy woods or if there's actually buildings there.
Let me pull up the area. So this, it's, it's twisted, so this is the north here.
Right.
So where are the stubby streets?
Roughly, roughly here and here, roughly.
Is that something to be looked at at final site plan?
Unless they're proposing, um, streetlights, which I don't believe they are for this subdivision or, or development. We don't get into photometrics for these types. If it's a single family home, they'd have, they'd have ledge on their own.
Yeah, but there are often times, we're talking about automobile lights, you know, trespassing onto adjacent properties, and we've talked about different ways to mitigate that. And I'm just wondering if, if there is something on the north edge of those, of those dead end roads that, uh, there should be considered, some consideration for that?
Yeah, that's something, that's something that we can work, we can look at between preliminary and final. Oftentimes, we do require them to put up a guardrail. Fortunately, that's not the ideal solution for anybody.
Yeah.
But that's something that we can work with, yeah, between preliminary and final, put that.
So right now, there would not be guardrails at the ends of those streets?
That is typically a determination of, of the engineering department and the fire department. And typically, it's not something we deal with at this level yet. It's something that's dealt with between preliminary and final. But it's something that we will note that was raised at the planning commission level, and we can work on it between preliminary and final if we get to that point.
I mean, we, you remember the last meeting, we typically, uh, the reason that, that, that there's stub roads here is because we, interconnectivity of streets is a positive.
For future development.
For future development. You know, a lot of times there's, a lot of times the, the owner, property owner in this situation is elated that this is happening because there's a potential sale and extension of the streets further.
Okay, are we ready for a resolution, then?
All right, I'll, I'll move. Resolve with the preliminary, uh, safe plan, site condominium approval, pursuant to our plea in section ten, one oh two of the zoning ordinance, as requested for a pine hardwoods site condominium, twenty-five units per lot, units slash lots, north side of Waddles between Greensboro and Forsyth. Section thirteen currently zone R one C, one family residential district, be granted.
Support by Mr. Strat. Further discussion? If not, the roll call, please.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Did you print?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Danzika?
Yes.
Mr. Strat?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Brad Hettian?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Agenda item number six is, uh, public comment for items on the current agenda. One in the audience wants to speak on item on the current agenda. So you got a, 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 planning commission comment, number seven. Let's begin tonight with Mr. Craig.
I have no comment, other than to say I had a personal issue that came up right at the time I was ready to come here. I'm a little bit late.
Nothing to next to you. Ms. Cruz.
My only comment tonight is, you know, I, what we just had to do was fairly necessary under the ordinances and, and the way things are run here in Troy. But I hate it. I hate it for those people. And I know that you all are familiar with where I live, you know, and I have recently experienced exactly what they're experiencing. And it's unfortunate that in the role that we're in, that we don't have discretion. But we don't. And so tonight is, it is what it is. And I wish I could've made it different for you. Unfortunately, we can't.
Mr. Abidian?
No comment.
Mr. Strat? Ms. Cooper?
Yes, I hate to be the squeaky wheel here, but, uh, Mr. Motley, where do you stand on the fracking ordinance?
I unfortunately don't have an answer. The city attorney is aware that this commission's waiting. I talk to her all the time about it. She's extremely busy and...
Have you gotten the material from the State of Michigan you're waiting for?
Yes, we did.
Okay. So it's on Laurie's desk and we're looking for it. You might tell her that we're getting a little impatient.
I think she's aware of that, yes.
Yeah, I was, likewise, I had a question about the wetland and the tree ordinance. If, if you've gone to the management, city management, and if you're going to, how that, was that well received personally, and are they going to pursue that?
Yeah, I mean, the, um, the, basically, it was well received. The, the, I did share it with the city manager. This, this, there's process involved here, and there's, uh, I need to inform my, you know, my superiors about it. And he, he understands and supports the fact that the planning commi, planning commission takes a resolution like that, then, you know, it's, you know, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna act on it. We're gonna come up with some language, and we're gonna move forward. So, um, you know, these, these, all we've got left now are difficult sites like this, like this one. That's all we have left. The, the easy ones are, are, we're developed along. So, yeah, we'll start, we'll start moving on. It was only two weeks ago that we, like, passed that resolution. So, um, we're, uh, we're, we'll schedule some internal, this dialogue and as well as dialogue with the planning commission, we'll, we'll move on.
Yeah. I think it's, it's important that we do move rather quickly on this because, you know, the planning commission does move a resolution like that without considerable thought. And we're the ones who experienced the brunt of a lot of this saying no to developers because we don't, our hands are tied and we have no other alternatives.
Can you give an idea as far as the timetable? What you would expect as far as the process of developing this ordinance or amendment?
Really depends on how, how clean it is and how, how the discussion goes with planning commission. So, I mean, I don't, if it's something that, that we get concurrence on fairly early, I don't see a reason why we should, should take more than a, more than two or three planning commission meetings to really wrap our hands around it. I think we, I think we can have some, if not, if not a working draft or certainly kind of a conceptual outline and some talking points within, within the next, you know, by, by the, by the, by the second Tuesday of, of May, I would think, you know.
But the problem, when are we having the hearing on the master plan update? Is that coming up pretty quickly too?
Our next, our next public meeting on the master plan update will be in senior form. That's the, the next big one. And then following that, we're, we're going to be ready with, with a complete draft. That's really our, um, that's probably our, our biggest, I don't want to say kind of event type meeting. We, I think, I, I think we're going to have a real big splash at that meeting. I think we're going to have really, really high attendance at that meeting.
Right.
We'll have it, we'll likely have it on a, on a off council Monday at the community center following the lunch.
Right.
So we've got, and we'll also market it, we'll, we'll inform. There's been some people that are very interested in attending, so we'll, we'll inform them, and we'll, we'll have, we'll announce it through our website to what it'll be to get, to get good attendance. But I think, um, that's going to be one that, planning commissioners are going to want to attend because I think it's going to be pretty, pretty good.
Right. And you'll let us know as soon as it's even attended, at least.
Mr. Robins, I, I don't think that the, the adoption of the master plan was, should slow down. Planning commission's action on the treaty.
Right.
I think something can be done easily concurrently.
And I, and I don't want to get into a conversation about the draft ordinance because we're not there yet, but we're really, you know, there, I keep, I keep being reminded of efforts that were made in the past, about fifteen or so years ago. There was a, quite a, quite a comprehensive tree preservation of wetlands ordinance that was proposed and it went nowhere very, very quickly. What we're really talking about is something that's not, it is not anywhere near that in scope. It's really to, it's really to, related to undeveloped parcels and new development. The one that was proposed was, was related to all properties. Even, Mr. Hudson, you made, you taught, made a point about, you know, cutting a tree down in someone's property for a, property that's had a homeowner for twenty years, you weren't allowed to cut a tree down. This isn't, this isn't going to be that. This is going to be for new developments.
However, that's going to have to be made particularly clear in the public media because that's what is so controversial about the other one fifteen years ago, you know, so...
There's going to have to be a big education component also, the ordinance drafting.
And, and I think we, something that also is, has been hammered home to me on a couple of recent applications. Mr. Robinson made the point, our, our cluster ordinance doesn't, I think, could be, could be written with a little bit more flexibility. I, I don't think it's all that it could be in terms of encouraging clustering. In, on some parcels, particularly smaller parcels, I think that developers aren't somewhat hamstrung by, by some of the parameters that are required. So I mean, I think that's something we should probably look at in partnership with the, with the tree preservation effort that we're going to be making.
Hey, you know, at that time, we were vacant land rich in Troy, not facing the problems we've got now with the problem small areas. It makes that cluster ordinance sound workable.
Right. Well, you saw what, what Mr. Maniaci had to do for this. He had to buy a bunch of backyard to make it happen. I mean, they're, the developers are, are having to be really creative now to come up with enough area to, to, to develop something meaningful. Right.
Ms. Cruz.
Just curious, as we talk about reviewing some of the existing ordinances or creating new ones, any more discussion about the Big Beaver corridor and looking at the development going up higher on this Big Beaver as opposed to the single level buildings?
Yeah, we've, we've talked about it, concept, on a, on a really general and conceptual level. We agree with, we agree with the dialogue that the planning commission had. The master pla, excuse me, the Big Beaver corridor study called, well, you saw my presentation in class meeting. Big Beaver corridor study already calls for the master plan support. It's, it's already in the master plan. It's already master planned for it. So, so what you're talking about, it would be an ordinance update. So, you know, we support it. The question really is, is, you know, where? Where on Big Beaver should, it probably should not, my belief is, it probably shouldn't be all Big Beaver. We should clearly define the area of it. That's a relatively quick fix of the ordinance, relatively. But, yeah, we, we'll move on that.
I think you need to put that on your to-do list also. Because I think that's a very, yeah. It's time.
It is.
It's time we've done something about that. You know, we already see some of the cookie cutter developments that are coming in. And I thought that identify, like, what you had suggested by identifying the area, um, west of I-75. Sounds like a good thing to put in. And that would just take an ordinance change, that wouldn't take...
Yes. So there's three, so there's, I see three, potentially three items that come up. One is, one is the, is Big Beaver, the height. The second is the clustering, and I think the third would be, you know, not in that order.
Fourth is extraction.
And extraction.
Four.
There's four then. And there's, there's, there'll be some other minor housekeeping items that spin off from the, from the, from the master plan. But the clustering does go kind of hand in glove with, with providing more housing opportunities. You know, you start getting into bonuses and more density, you start getting into more, potentially more units that maybe cater to the empty nesters, and you, you can be a little bit more creative in terms of your market.
Okay.
We're going to be busy.
Yeah, and remember, I don't buy green bananas anymore, so... But anyway, I think it...
You're in line, buddy.
It is, it is important that we, to go on this because...
Move up.
As Ms. Cruz said, you know, we see the results of this every time, and we're just a lot of residents. Things that, you know, that maybe they should understand, they don't understand. And I know, I, I understand you met with some of these people earlier.
I met with one, one gentleman. I met with one of them, gentlemen.
Okay, if someone else has anything else, we're adjourned.